To the fabric of our nation and whereas the injustices and hardships endured by indigenous people throughout history including forced displacement, violence and discrimination have left lasting scars and whereas we honor the resilience and strength of the indigenous people who have persisted in the face of adversity, persevering, preserving their languages, customs and spiritual practices for future generations and whereas we acknowledge that Indigenous Peoples' Day provides an opportunity for all individuals to learn about the diverse cultures, languages and traditions of the indigenous peoples and to engage in meaningful dialogue to promote understanding, respect and reconciliation. Now therefore I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby recognize October 14th, 2024 as a day of remembrance for indigenous people and furthermore this Mount Pleasant City Commission encourages our residents to reflect upon and recognize the ongoing struggles and challenges faced by indigenous communities and stand in solidarity with them. And further, the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the value of the working collaboratively together with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and looks forward to fostering a spirit of inclusivity, respect and cooperation within our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 23rd day of September, 2024. At this time, I will ask the Commission if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to open up the floor to public input on agenda items. This is when you can come up to the podium if you wish to speak on something that is in the agenda tonight. You will be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom tonight?
There's no one.
Are there any emails for us tonight? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an agenda item tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public input and we will move on to receipts of petitions and communications. Manager disents.
Receipt of petitions and communications this evening includes receipt of Experimental Aircraft Association's rent-free lease for city-owned hangar 2024 benefits and minutes of the planning commission July and August.
Okay. Are there any items on the consent items that the Commission would like moved into the regular agenda?
I'd like item five, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 9th, 2024, moved into the, it'd be under new business then.
All right. What I'm going to do is we will mark that one as number nine. And we will get to it right after the consent.
Tracking that, yeah, it took me a second to figure out where we were putting that. Thank you.
All right. Manager disents. We've removed number five. If you could continue.
Absolutely. Consent items then will include approval of the minutes from the closed session held September 9th, 2024, approve designation of Marilyn Wixson as deputy city clerk, consider changing signatory authorized to transact business of the city bank accounts, consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
I move that we accept the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
As modified.
As modified. Thank you.
Seconded.
Second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, so now we're going to move to number nine, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 9th, 2024. Commissioner Wingard.
Yep. So in the minutes from the meeting on September 9th, I believe on the second page, I don't know in the packet what page number it is. My motion was we were going over the public hearing on CD4 and CD5 rules and regulations. It was moved by Commissioner Wingard to approve the proposed ordinance removing the minimum height requirement of a second story. It's not quite the motion I had. It was because it sounds like the ordinance was removing the minimum or that I was in support of the ordinance as it was removing the minimum height requirements. The actual motion was, and I'll send this out after, move to approve the text changes with the exemption of text changes regarding the requirement of a second story on a new development because I was in opposition of the removal of, I would like to require businesses to have a second story. Gets a little wordy, I do apologize, but.
Okay, is there any discussion on that change?
No, I think he's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the change as presented?
I move that we accept the change as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Do you need a roll call for this change? No? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. The minutes will reflect the change.
And I'm gonna email out, I had typed it out though.
All right, so now we're going to move on to our public hearings. Our public hearings tonight, the first one is, we need to hear public input on the adoption of the vendor's code for the 110.27. Manager dissons.
Absolutely. You know what, I will hand it off to our downtown development director, Michelle Sponseller. She worked on the amendment, and she can give us a rundown before the public hearing.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Time to put the glasses on. All right. In May, staff was tasked with updating two ordinances, Section 110.27, the vendor ordinance, and 110.28, mobile food service providers, to ensure they are clear and easy for applicants to follow. Staff believe that splitting the two ordinance is the best interest of both applicants and staff, providing a clear delineation between them. The revised 110.27 vendor will cover non-food items or items not intended for immediate consumption, while 110.28, transitory food service units, will address ready-to-eat or immediately consumable foods. Additionally, staff collected information from various communities across the state to compare data points such as fee structure, hours of operation, locations of operations, number of licenses, and proximity to brick-and-mortar restaurants. This data was used to ensure the ordinance is comprehensive and reflects the most up-to-date practices from around the state. Based on this information, staff developed a tiered fee schedule tailored to specific nuanced situations rather than the current one-size-fits-all of $1,000, and requested city commission provide direction. At the August 12th meeting, consensus was reached to revise the fee schedule. A copy of that fee schedule is attached to this packet. Additionally, at the August 12th meeting, city commission requested that change was made to the draft vendor ordinance prohibiting the sale of animals. The new language appears in Section 110.27, Section E, Regulations, Item Number Five, Sale of Animals. So, this evening, we hold a public hearing to allow public input and adopt Section 110.27 vendors in the Mount Pleasant City Council of Ordinances and set the fee schedule as presented.
All right.
All right.
All right. At this time, we will open up to the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on Section 110.27 vendors and our fee schedule, you may step to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and your, state your address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you'll be asked, you can reuse the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak about this? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Okay. Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing, and we will move this to the Commission. Are there any clarifications needed at this point before we go into discussion? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that we accept the... We accept the change in, we accept the change in the section as presented.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. We have a motion that we accept the adoption of Section 110.27. And we have a second. I will open the floor to discussion. Is there any discussion on this?
I thought...
I wasn't, I wanted to make sure that we were just talking about .27, and she...
Yes.
I saw your hand.
Yes. 110.27.
Is there any further discussion? Yes.
I just want to clarify that, you know, my recollection is that we agreed that it wouldn't be a one-size-fits-all. Yes. Okay. Just making sure.
Yes, we had broken down the fees.
Yes.
So that someone who had a push cart.
Yes.
Would pay $2.50.
Right.
And someone who had a trailer or a food truck would pay $7.50 for the fee for the year. They still had to follow up the other regulations.
Regulations, yes. Just clarifying.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman is empty, excuse me, absent. Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. So, we're going to move on to the second public hearing, which is the adoption of Section 110.28. If you... I'll let Michelle introduce this first. I'm getting ahead of myself.
This is gonna be much shorter, because I covered most in the previous. Just for clarification, there were no changes in the proposed draft from the August 12th meeting, and the fee schedule was similar to, the same actually, not similar, the same as what it was for vendors. It was the tiered schedule.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. If you wish to speak on this, you may step forward to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom? No emails? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to the Commission. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we accept the, that we adopt the changes in this section as presented.
The Section 110...
Section 110.28.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman is absent. Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to the prioritization of 2%. At this time, I'm going to ask the Commission to read off what items they wish to put towards the 2% that we will receive this fall. I'm gonna start at the end with Commissioner Rollins, and we will move forward.
Okay, so, my five are Partners Empowering All Kids, Emergency Services Team Van, Pickert Storm Sewer, Sidewalk Replacement 2025, and 1303 North Franklin Former Landfill Remediation.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Ake?
Commissioner Ake has, actually, I have six. It's, who submitted the public works? Jason? Okay. So I'm gonna, I do need to ask him a question before I make up my mind. All right. So Lime Disposal and Pickert Street. If you were to say in terms of critical, a critical need, or at least attention both needs, need?
I guess I'd say Lime Disposal. That's a pretty expensive item that we have at our water treatment plant, and so...
Okay. All right. Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you. All right. In that case, therefore, I have Airport Operational, Peak, Police Emergency Service, North Franklin, Landfill, and then Lime Disposal.
Okay. Commissioner Wingard? Oh, hang on a second. Yes. Can you repeat it?
Okay. Airport Operational, Community, Peak, the Peak Program. Yes. Emergency Service, that's Laurier, and North Franklin, Landfill, and then Lime Disposal. You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Wingard?
Yep. So, number one is Peak, Partners Empowering All Kids. Number two, North Franklin Street Landfill. Number three is Pickert Storm Sewer. Number four is the Sewer Pipeline Inspection Camera. And number five is Lime Disposal.
Okay, Commissioner Bush?
If Commissioner Ake and I were on a game show, we would be a match. So I have Emergency Service Van, the Airport Operational Budget, the Peak Program, Landfill Remediation, and Lime Disposal.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Alsager?
Well, I should make just a little comment that last time we had five that were critical, so in my mind, that made it easy. This time, there were six, so eenie meenie. Starting with the airport, the operational funding, and the snow removal from the airport. And then, the next one under Community Services is the Peak Program. And under the Police category, the Emergency Services Team Van. And then, the last one is the 1303 North Franklin Former Landfill Remediation.
Okay. And mine are the Airport Operational Funding, the Airport Snow Removal, Partners Empowering All Kids, Peak Program, the Emergency Service Team Van, and the 1303 North Franklin. You have everything that you need? Excellent. All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment that since 2002, we've been fortunate enough to receive just over 25 million in grant funding from this program. So I'd like to give a big thanks to our partners over at the tribal community. This, it's a real boon to the community, and I just wanted to put out my thanks there.
Yes. Yes, they have been very, very generous. All right. At this time, we're going to do the announcements of city-related issues and new business. This is where the City Commission announces things that they know that are going on around the city, or things that are happening that they want people to understand. The first thing, I'm going to start out with a couple of understandings. We are in a, I'm sure nobody knows this, we're in a political time, right? This is an election season. I want to remind people that it is illegal in Michigan to steal or deface political signs in somebody's yard. People do have cameras, somebody will get caught. If you are caught, it is a, either a $500 fine or up to 90 days in jail. It doesn't matter who you're voting for. It is based on your belief system. And just because somebody has a sign in their yard that you do not like doesn't mean that you have to vote for that person. That is yours, and that is theirs. So let's just, you know, mind your own business and respect our neighbors. The next thing I want to read is, this is from michigan.gov/vote. 2024 is an important election year for our state and our country. However you choose to cast your ballot, I hope that you would take this opportunity to ensure your voice is heard on important issues up and down the ballot. And now, voting in Michigan is easier than ever. You have the option to cast your ballot early, during at least nine days of early in-person voting, including the two weekends before Election Day. You can also vote from home by visiting michigan.gov/vote and requesting a ballot that can be mailed to you. Be sure to return it to your clerk by 8:00 PM on Election Day. And of course, there's always the in-person voting option on Election Day. That choice is yours. Voting is not the only way that you can play a part in the protection of our democracy. You can sign up to be an election worker and help ensure that our elections remain secure. Visit michigan.gov/pollworkers to help, to apply to help. And remember, your local election clerk is the go-to source for all your election needs. You'll find reliable election information on their website, as well as the Secretary of State's website. The bottom line is, no matter where you live or who you plan to vote for, it's all of us to rise to the noise, to rise above the noise and encourage everyone to vote. This election will define your future. Make your participation a reflection of that, and you make your voice heard. Thank you. Is there anything that the Commission would like to add? Yes?
Well, kind of along that same vein that this Thursday, there are two events which you might have to choose between which one to go to. The Candidate Forum is at the Commission on Aging, 6:30 to 8:30. It's a little different than previous years when they had more of a question format. But at the same time, well, just about the same time, our state representative Jerry Nyer is hosting an event from 6 till 8 o'clock at Cheers Restaurant, where he's gonna be discussing the wage increases that the voters passed, but it's kind of his take on how they're being implemented.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ake?
This is, this is not about the city per se, but this week is actually National Book Ban Week. So, if you love to read books, and you wanna make sure that books are not being tossed out of the library and being banned, this is the week to pay attention, do things. It's September 22nd to the 28th.
Right?
Save knowledge.
Thank you. Commissioner Wingard?
Yep. So, another event going on this Thursday. It's a packed one. If you can get to all three, I'm sure you'll get a sticker. The, the city's consultants working on the Mission Street redesign project are gonna be hosting a Community Input Day on September 26th. They have three opportunities that day for community members to provide input on a set of proposed Mission Street design concepts. This includes the farmer's market at Allen Park from 9 to 11:00 AM, Central Michigan University at the Bovee University Center from 12 to 2:00 PM, and there'll be an open house right here at City Hall from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. So, again, we are currently in the process of working on potential redesigns for Mission Streets. We're looking for community inputs. No designs are fixed in place, but we have a lot of exciting proposals. I'm hoping to get one to one of the earlier sessions. I'm excited to attend the candidate forum in the local area, but wanted to put that out there.
Is there any other comments? Yes.
I just want to add after the comments about voting, that the ballots for the City of Mount Pleasant were received late this morning, a little later than we normally get them, and hopefully, they'll all be in the mail by Friday, so you can look for those next week. Bye. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Yes. Commissioner Ake?
May I just simply ask Heather to perhaps indicate where the voting stations are or polling stations are? Because the one for Vowels, and I recall people saying they didn't, you know, they were kind of lost. So since the Vowels Voting Station or Polling Booth has been closed, I think it might be helpful to announce or let people know exactly where they are right now.
Due to redistricting at the first of the year, Vowels was eliminated as a polling location. We consolidated from five precincts to three as a cost-saving measure. Voting will take place at Ganyard, Pollin, and Fancher Schools on Election Day. Early voting will be from October 26th to November 3rd at Powers Hall, from 8 to 4, those nine consecutive days. All voters are sent new voter identification cards indicating that change at the first of the year. All that information is available on the website that the mayor referenced earlier at michigan.gov/vote. And you can also use vote411.org through the League of Women Voters, and you're welcome to call our office. to call our office if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, thank you.
Are there any other announcements? All right, at this time, we will open the floor to public comment, on agenda and non-agenda items. This is where you can come forward and you step up to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom at this time?
I'm raising.
Okay. Are there any emails?
We have an email expressing appreciation for changes to the city's work plans and some research about what the work plans are.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you wish to speak at this time, on agenda and non-agenda items, you may step to the podium.
I'm Gisela Moffett, and I live at 1101 Watson Road. As you, I'm also a member of SWAN, the Southwest Association of Neighbors. And as you know, we are very concerned about the rezoning or the possible rezoning here of our neighborhood. We sent you a letter detailing here our concerns, but tonight here we would like to read the letter for the record. And so I asked Mary Center, who is an active SWAN member, to read the letter here to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm Mary Center, and I live at 1209 Toma Drive. You know, Dr. Moffett is a retired teacher. I am a not-retired teacher, so I have more of the teacher voice. That's why I was asked. And given the five-minute limit, I'm not going to read word for word, but I'm going to summarize the concerns. You should know that we had in SWAN a meeting on September 11th to talk about these issues. The city planner was with us virtually and gave a useful presentation. But we had a discussion afterwards. Thirty-four people attended, even though the meeting was called without a great deal of advance notice. And not a single person who attended, not a single person of the 34, expressed any level of support at all for what the city is proposing for that area bounded by Broomfield and Crawford. So I'm going to outline the set of concerns that were raised in our open discussion. The first concern dealt with the issue of timing. It seemed like this whole proposal from the city was being rushed. There was limited publicity, limited time for public discussion other than what is mandated, and limited time really for the city staff to address the concerns that were raised. A second issue that was raised in different ways had to do with traffic. One aspect of the traffic is congestion. We know on Isabella Road where the Renaissance Academy, parents dropping off or picking up their children. If you've been on that road at that time, traffic becomes delayed and congested. But perhaps of even greater importance in terms of traffic deals with safety issues. You know, in that area near Crawford and Broomfield, there are children crossing Crawford to get to Vowels School. The Orchard Way condominium development, many senior citizens live in that area. I hope I don't have to remind you that a CMU student was killed in the area a few years ago. CMU students walk and bike to campus in that area, so traffic's an issue. And if any new school is put into that area, of course, those children would be at risk as well. Other concerns that were raised had to do with the proposal for some of that land to be designated mixed-use low development. And there was an extended discussion about the fact that unfortunately, there are already many empty storefronts in Mount Pleasant, up and down Mission Road, certainly downtown, the north end of campus on Bellows Road. And these empty storefronts, it's blight, it's unsightly, and it certainly leads visitors, I would think, to think that this is a town in decline rather than a town that's dynamic. And we especially noted that there already are empty storefronts just a couple blocks from the area under discussion, the area where there used to be a 7-Eleven store and other small stores. And that strip mall right now is largely empty and certainly is not an attractive area at the south end of campus. Another set of concerns that were raised, and there was an extended discussion, had to do with the possibility of a threat to Mount Pleasant Public Schools. The city planner talked at some length about all the positive things that result from more private schools in the area, but our discussion focused on the negative aspects of additional private schools for our public schools. So certainly, one issue is that if children go to private schools, then there's a decline in school enrollment in the public schools. I suppose that's obvious enough. But concerns were also raised about funding for the public schools, possible millages being proposed in the future. Certainly, if Mount Pleasant residents are sending their children to private schools, they may be less inclined to support the public schools, whether it's parent activity and involvement in the schools, or whether it's supporting taxes for the public schools. So we have a concern about the possible significant negative effects on the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. And, you know, we think public education is important for a vibrant community. Also related to this, concerns were expressed about the possible erosion of the city's tax base. Certainly, land occupied by schools is tax exempt. And some residents expressed concern that a larger part of that fairly sizable parcel of land being discussed, that a large chunk of that land would become tax exempt, and that should be a concern to the city. Some longer-term residents, and I guess I include myself in this, expressed frustration at what they see as the city reneging on promises made when the PRD designation, the planned residential development designation, was initially adopted by the city. Citizens at that time were told by the city that this designation would exist in perpetuity. So as a consequence, you know, where does this come in terms of action? The Southwest Association of Neighbors asks that the timetable for rezoning be rethought, redesigned, so that more time is available for public comment and more time is available for thoughtful consideration by the city of the concerns that are being raised. And also that the public be informed about the financial ramifications related to the termination of the PRD termination. More specifically, we ask that no vote on rezoning be taken at the planning commission meetings already scheduled for October and November, or your own meetings, the city commission meetings scheduled for November and December. Alternatively, if you feel a need to take votes, if votes are taken, then we ask respectively that the city commission, you folks, vote no on what's being proposed. And of course, we'd ask the planning commission to vote no as well, if in fact a vote is taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Sandel. I live at 9310 East Pleasant Valley Road in Shepherd. I'm also a small business owner at 600 North Mission Street in Mount Pleasant. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am running for Isabella County Clerk. I've been a lifelong resident of Isabella County. I'm a Shepherd graduate, and I attended CMU. I have three children and five grandchildren. I own a small business in Mount Pleasant that has a retail store. I currently serve as co-chair for the Shepherd Maple Syrup Festival Committee. I serve as a member of the Central Michigan Home Builders, and I currently serve as secretary for the Isabella County Council of Government. I was elected in 2012 as the co-tourship clerk, so I believe that those skills that I have learned in this time regarding elections, budgets, and other duties associated with that position allowed me and give me some experience that I could bring to the table as Isabella County Clerk. I also just wanted to let you know that I'm a quick learner, I'm a people person, and I'm a problem solver. And I love my community. I consider Mount Pleasant my second home, and Isabella County as a whole has, it's just an awesome place to grow up and live. So I just, again, wanted to introduce myself, Patty Sandel, running for county clerk, and hopefully you'll consider me in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Kilmer, 219 North Lansing Street. I just want to say that I know Patty, and she rocks. I like her a lot. So I've been talking to you about one woman's experience with the Mount Pleasant Police. So this is just another chapter, and I've made up pseudonyms. Becky Brown is what I'm calling this woman. So after the failed report of the sexual assault, Becky Brown was hanging out in her trailer down in the south end of campus, I forget the name of it, but South Campus. And one afternoon, she's studying, and there's a knock at the door, and it's two Mount Pleasant police officers. It is not the Sheriff's Department. It is not any other police agency. It is the Mount Pleasant Police Officers. And they are looking for a woman, and they want to know if there's a, I'll just call her Mrs. Opium. Opioid, we'll call her Mrs. Opioid. They knock on the door, they say, is Mrs. Opioid there? And Becky Brown says, yeah, no, she doesn't live here. And Becky Brown knows who Mrs. Opioid is. She's like a friend of a friend of a friend of a friend kind of a thing, and she doesn't like Mrs. Opioid. She met her once, and she wants nothing to do with Mrs. Opioid. But the Mount Pleasant Police say she's listed as an associate of Mrs. Opioid. So they come in and they want, they want to see Becky Brown's driver's license, and Becky Brown says, what do you want to see that for? And they say, well, because we're going to say you look like Mrs. Opioid and take you down to the station if you don't show us your driver's license to prove that you're not Mrs. Opioid. So Becky Brown takes out her driver's license, and she shows it to one of the police officers who's look at it, and they see the driver's license says Becky Brown. We'll just call her Becky B. Brown. And they say, oh, Becky Brown. And then they hand it to the other officer, who takes it out to his car. And Becky Brown didn't say, yeah, go ahead and take it out to your car, but they did that nonetheless. And they take it out to the car, and then a few minutes later, they come back and they say, well, Becky Brown, you're under arrest. And she says, what would I be under arrest for? This is a person who never gets in trouble, okay? CMU student does not get in trouble. And then, well, you failed to show up for a court hearing. And Becky Brown's like, what court hearing? I don't know what you're talking about. Court hearing, this is crazy. And they cuff her, and they put her in the back of the car, and she's crying, she's traumatized. This is a good girl, okay? She takes her down to the Sheriff's Department and to be booked. And she's put in this little room, and there's this mirror, you know, like in the cop shows, you see the mirror, and you can't see what's on the other side, and she's weeping, and she's, oh my God, what's going on? And she hears the people on the other side of the mirror go, uh-oh. And then she hears stuff like, she's only 5'1", and she hears, what's the middle name? Uh-oh. Really? We better call them. She hears from the other side of the mirror. So Becky Brown's sitting in there weeping, and then after a little while, they come out and they say, you're free to go. Now, Becky Brown lives two miles away from the Sheriff's Department where she was booked. Did anyone offer her a ride home? What do you think? Nope. They open the door. By the way, when you're arrested, you're taking in whatever clothing you have on. You don't have thought to think, am I going to be walking home two miles in this pair of clothing? You know, nothing, right? They open the door and say, bye. So now Becky Brown has to walk two miles home with not a I'm sorry, with nothing. So you can see why Becky Brown's not that happy about the police anymore. So then I get a phone call from, oh, first Becky Brown's father gets a phone call from Director Yegly saying, whoops, you want to come in and have a meeting? Yeah, yeah, I want to come in and have a meeting. Is my five minutes up?
Almost.
Okay. So Becky Brown invites her father to the meeting, and she also invites me to the meeting. And I'm sitting there with the meeting with Director Yegly, who's saying, I got no excuses, we were negligent. I'm like, really? Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So let me mention that Becky Brown has a physical disability. I wouldn't call it a disability, I would say a genetic mutation, which makes Becky Brown look like nobody else in the city of Mount Pleasant. There is no way that this Becky Brown looked anything like Mrs. Opioid or like whatever. Okay, so she's Becky B. Brown. The person they were apparently after was Becky H. Brown, who was 5'10" and had different hair color, and Becky B. Brown was 5'1" with this genetic mutation. And Director Yegly says to me, there's no excuse. It was just grossly negligent. So I'll be back with the rest of that story. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak? All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing or the public comment. And we have, would you like to go to a recess, or would you like to go right into the work session?
Recession.
Recession? We will do a five-minute recess. It is 7:48 at this time. So we have a five-minute recess. If anyone wishes to stay for the public or for the work session, it is open to the public. We will be discussing the most exciting thing. It's called the budget. So if you want to stay, go for it. All right, we're adjourned. Session. We're going to see how well City Manager Dissens can read numbers. Go for it.
I can read numbers very well. 2025. We're off to a good start. One for one. Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening, everyone. I am going to go over the 2025 proposed budget. So our goal for tonight is to, one, just have me give you a very high-level overview of the budget. I'm going to talk a lot about it, but the general fund. I'm going to talk very little about special revenue funds. We'll talk a bit about our enterprise funds. I'll get into some of the reasons why as we hit those. But most of the focus of tonight's conversation is on general fund, and then a number of different policy decisions as well. At the end, a number of different questions to ask the City Commission. Nothing we need to necessarily solve this evening, however, something that we'll probably want to go over in the near future. I'll also talk about the agenda, or, I'm sorry, the schedule for the budget going forward. So to start everything off, our budget for 2025 is based on the goals and objectives that the City Commission had developed as part of a work session in early of this year. So goals and objectives for 2025 include maintain service excellence, promote professional development, address community needs, implement strategic planning, and enhance financial management. Those are top-level goals that the City Commission wanted to achieve in 2025. And there's a number of objectives that have been identified for each one of these that Goals and Objectives document is found in the budget packet, should you want to revisit that. 2025 budget, the challenges that we face in developing this. Number one, inflation. Well, inflation has come down significantly over many different years. In fact, I believe right now we're on track for about a 2.5% CPI. Last year was 3.5%. '21 and '22 have certainly been two years of very high inflation. And the issue that we faced in 2025 in developing that budget is the fact that there are aspects of inflation that are very sticky. CPI is made up of a number of different things. And while you see the lowering of costs for things like food as well as travel, some, you know, we don't purchase a lot of those kind of things. What we do purchase are things that are exposed to wage inflation, and so we still feel that in a lot of the prices that we're getting from contractors at this time. Peak in Recreation. I talked with the City Commission about a challenge with that. And when we started this out, we really challenged the staff to try to develop some creative solutions, especially as it relates to our peak program. If you recall, this time last year, we had talked about our peak program as utilizing about $1.5 million in cash to offer the current subsidies to the recipients of the services that peak offers. Staff was very creative at addressing this challenge, not just on the expenses end, but significantly on the revenue as well, too, and being able to plug into a number of different state programs that brought new revenue into that program. Solid Waste Fund and the future of that fund going forward. We'll talk a little bit about that. That's something yet to be discussed from the City Commission. But obviously, as we transition to a single-hauler system come January 1, 2025, there still are some costs that the Solid Waste Fund captures, namely leaf collection and free brush chipping. Now, as we'll talk about later, we do have enough fund balance to sustain that for quite some time. But we'll still want to have a conversation in the near future as to how we're going to address the cost of that going forward. And then lastly, one of the challenges that we face is MTT cases, our Michigan Tax Tribunal cases. We currently have a number of different appeals before the Michigan Tax Tribunal that do have an impact on the value of properties, which then has an impact, obviously, on the collection of property taxes. Trying to estimate that is very difficult, so we take a very conservative approach towards our revenue growth in the future because of that. So, top level, General Fund revenue, $18.9 million for 2025. Significant portion of that and the lion's share of it comes from property taxes, which is 46%. Intergovernmental makes up the next chunk of revenue that comes into the city. And this is a number of different government programs that provide the city money for its operating expenses as well, too. Very small amount of city revenues are dedicated from charges for services as well as licensing and permits. And they always have an other line. These are things such as reimbursements, donations, insurance payments, those kind of things. General Fund Revenue, high-level overview of what has changed from year to year. One is the recognition of ARPA funds. We recognize these when we utilize them. So in 2025, we had booked the GKB Trail for $525,000. That's something we've talked about for quite some time. Now, at the end of 2025, all municipalitys are supposed to have their ARPA funds expensed. The team is proposing, then, that doing parking lots four and five in the next year will expense $932,000 of our remaining ARPA funds, meaning that they will be gone by the end of the year, will be in full compliance with the federal government. But if you recall, that was initially booked as a future capital improvement item in our Capital Improvements Plan that will free up that much money in a future year for other projects. We're proposing the same millage rate year after year, so the same that we've done for a number of different years. We're also assuming a 2% increase in taxable value. While we look out there, and we do see a number of different properties are selling for an increase of greater than 2%, you have to understand that that is going to be capped at CPI or 5%, whichever is lower. And then, at the same time, there's the offset of those MTT cases that I was talking about, which is why we landed on a very conservative revenue growth going forward. And then state shared revenue that's built in here is based on current state projections that the state gives us every year. As I stated, millage rate remains the same, and this shows the millage rate from '21 to 2025. There is a small differential in the operating millage versus other, and this main difference here is related to the amount of millage it takes to fund the 345 pension system. General Fund Expenditures, $19.1 million. Now, this is $200,000 roughly above what our revenues are. This is because we will be utilizing a signed fund balance for $200,000 for a number of different projects that we had set money aside for in the past, and we'll be expensing it this year.
Do you know that number minus those funds? It's okay if you don't?
Actually, it's a future... If I can give you the total net. Is that what you're looking for? The net?
Yeah.
I'll talk about fund balance in a little bit. Yeah, give me a couple of slides, and I might answer your question. If I do not, I'll come back to it. The General Fund Expenditures, most of which is compensation. Obviously, we provide services that require individuals to go do those services, and so that's the significant lion's share of it. 59% on in-house compensation, and then 14% for professional services, those things that we can't do in-house that we still need. Other than that, you have capital acquisitions, which make up 13%. And then other expenses between training supplies and other expenditures making up 14% of the General Fund budget. I don't want to lose my notes here, sorry. General Fund Buy Division, and this just shows a breakdown of where all of those expenses go, half of which goes to the Public Safety Department, next followed by Community Services and Finance Legislative, which is this group here, is 9% of the total budget, and then Public Works being 6%. General Fund Expenditures. For the most part, they remain status quo year over year. This is essentially supporting our current workforce model that we have. Nothing new or nothing major that we've introduced inside of this budget, though obviously, things change over time, and that's what those budget amendments are for. And we know that we're going to come to the City Commission with a number of different changes, and I'll get to that a little bit later in the presentation. The one major change year over year that we do want to bring to the City Commission's concern is a proposed MERS contribution of $600,000. This would be in addition to our annual required contributions to help pay down our unfunded liabilities for that pension.
We have an extra zero in there.
That's six million.
Yeah. I think there was an added...
Yeah, it's six million.
That one looks right.
Okay. It is 600,000. If we did 6 million, that would be great.
It says 6 million.
But I cannot promise that we have that sort of funding.
That's why I'm shocked.
That's the difference I was looking for.
We talked about doing this, right? I feel like I...
With the retirement system.
Yeah, we talked about doing this.
Yeah, so we did... Yeah, we did an additional $550,000 in this current fiscal year. And then the previous fiscal year to that was right around an extra million. So the city has been doing its best to try to pay off those unfunded liabilities at a faster rate.
Okay.
General Fund Balance. This will leave our unassigned fund balance. We will be adding $56,150 to our unassigned fund balance. So Commissioner Winger, I don't know if that was the answer to the question that you were talking about, the difference in, let's say, the $200,000 of assigned fund balance and then what's still left over at the end of the year.
I think that's pretty close, yes. So income versus expenditures, but the expenditures, we had some money saved up that we were including in the expenditures. So if we took out the money that we had saved up, it sounds like we're adding $56,000 into General Fund.
That's correct, yeah. That will leave us with an unassigned fund balance of $6.1 million, representing 3.2% of our 2025 budgeted expenses, giving us about four months of operating cash for any kind of emergency needs. Our assigned fund balances are going to also increase as well, too. This will assign $200,000 to our fire truck reserve. This is something that we want to do on an annual basis, obviously, so we don't find ourselves needing a fire truck in the future and then trying to have to figure out how we would get that. Debt is always a possibility, but certainly in years where you have the capability, we try to save money for it. And then we do have $721,088 that is assigned for economic initiatives. Now, that is assigned because it is also tied to a program that the city had entered with the state for some work that was done at the former Mount Pleasant facility there. So a lot of that is tied to a debt service that we continue to pay down, but it is still marked as assigned. Other Funds. Our Local Street and Major Street essentially are going to operate where we take cash in, and then we put cash out into various projects. Local Street plans to do reconstruction on Downtown Alley as well as 12 different street overlays that are found in the Capital Improvements Plan. And then also in the Major Street, reconstruction of Franklin, an overlay of three different streets as well. Again, details in the Capital Improvements Plan if you're looking for those. I can also make sure to attach it to an email should anyone want to take a look at that again. Capital Improvement Plan Millage Projects. Most of these are going to be going to either Chippewa Waters or the Chippewa River Bank Protection Program that we're doing. Public Safety Department has a number of different upgrades to the facilities for the Fire Apparatus Bay, and then also Downtown Alley Reconstruction and Downtown Improvement Program as well, too. Airport Major Expenses here are going to be the runway rehab design work. And for our Water Resource Recovery Facility, we're continuing to move forward with Phase 2 of our Major Rehabilitation Program. Solid Waste. We'll continue no-fee brush chipping pickup twice per year. And it'll be our first year for our contracted pickup as well, too, with Grainger Services. Water, and this is news, and this is something that we know we will have to come back to the City Commission with an amended budget for. We just got accepted into the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program, DWSRF. So very similar to what we had done with the Werf Project. This is a loan from the state at a very low interest rate that also comes with a number of grant funding as well, too. Still working out the final details to that and meetings to come on that to get approvals and blessing from the City Commission.
Okay, stop there briefly. So what does that mean? Unpack that for me.
So what we would do is we'll come to the City Commission to talk about what the total project will look like. So we will talk about the needed upgrades to the water plant and anything associated with our water system. We'll look at that, and we plan on breaking the project down right now into two different phases, very similar to what we did with the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And so there's a process then for going through with that. We'll have to hold public hearings. The City Commission will weigh in. Does the City Commission agree with the list of projects? Does the City Commission agree to the terms of the loan as well as the grant funding that comes before it?
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, absolutely. Fees and Charges. The only changes in fees and charges are going to be related to water as well as public works. Now, most folks don't really encounter some of the public works fees that we have. A lot of those you'll find in the budget are related more towards infrastructure upgrades, connections to our water sewer systems, those kind of things. One thing I do want to highlight, though, is that water would have a planned increase of 7% of the bill. Now, this translates to the average homeowner paying an extra $1.21 per month in fees in addition to what they're paying now from the previous year. That assumes about 5,000 gallons of use within a month, which is the average for, depending on who you are, families of two and four.
This is cheaper than what I'm paying now.
I have months that are, it's $1,000, and I have months that is less than $1,000.
Oh, nice.
It's because I swim so much, I take my showers there.
Okay.
Excellent. So obviously, the increase in water fees is to go towards the increased cost for the debt service that we would encounter for the DWSRF. Now, it could be more. That planned 7% increase was to try to capture about an extra $1 million in total annual revenue. I don't think our debt service is going to be that much, so that could fluctuate. But obviously, once you get to Phase 2, it may end up going more at that time. So I just want to give the City Commission the heads up on that. Again, and I always say, it's a sliding scale because as you start to book out those projects, a lot of things change. What might be initially booked as $13 million for a Phase 1 can very quickly go to $15, $17 million. I think most of you folks have been along for the ride on that one, but that is just the environment we live in.
Did you say that the fee increase... So again, average homeowner is about $1.21 increase in fees a month. Did you say that brings in about an additional $1 million, was that?
It's not just... I mean, obviously, that's for the resident portion. Obviously, if you use more, you're going to have a larger increase. But that 7% increase, the goal was to try to bring in about an extra $1 million.
Thank you.
Unresolved Issues. Things that we need to have some conversations on. One, opioid settlement funding. So I know I emailed the City Commission, just talked a little bit about this. So I know I emailed the City Commission, just talked a little bit about this. But this has just been an interesting and changing landscape. Initially, when we were contacted about some of the proceeds from the settlement funding, the city received a very small amount, maybe $5,000, $6,000, I can't remember. It was a fairly small amount. And at the time, the Finance Director had looked at that and realized that's about how much they thought we were spending in life-saving drugs for individuals that are going through a drug overdose, those kind of things. But we have a separate kind of program now that I understand that we don't have to pay that. And so now, we've been able to put that money to the side. And there are certain things that you can do with that money, certain things that you can't. I think it would be worthwhile for the City Commission to hold the work session to talk about this. Do we want to dedicate it to one particular program or another?
Are you interested in feedback or right now?
I was, I think that probably could be its own work session. Because I think that would-
Yeah, because you opened a can of worms.
Yep, absolutely. Two, to make sure that the City Commission is fully supportive of the increased MERS contribution, which is being proposed at $600,000 for this year. Another one that we don't know, but I know we will have an early amendment, is related to our CHIL grant. So I can say, because I signed the agreement and everything like that, the city is receiving a CHIL grant, we will be utilizing about $1.5 million in state funding to help support about 43 different homeowners with $10,000 each of different upgrades for their homes. So more to come on that one as we continue to work with the state on the particulars of how that program is going to be rolled out. But I am very happy to announce that publicly, finally, after a little while of waiting.
That's good.
We should also have a future discussion on the Solid Waste Fund. Again, one that can wait and one that we don't necessarily need to jump on now. As you'll see, we have fund balance that will last until 2027. So we have a couple of years of fund balance that we could ride out. But as I had mentioned, the Solid Waste Fund helps to offset our leaf collection program as well as it helps to provide the cost for the free brush chipping that we do twice per year. We want to identify how we may want to come up with the funding for those programs into the future. And then something just on the horizon, as we've discussed, too. We have open contract negotiations that can obviously have a budgetary impact as well.
How is that going?
You know, I think it's, I think it's going well.
All right.
So our next steps then, work session, September 23rd, that's this evening. We had our presentation here. On October 28th, we will have a work session in which City Commission questions will be answered regarding the budget. So my request to the City Commission then is if you could please email me any questions that you have related to the 2025 budget, email those to me by October 14th. That gives me and staff adequate time to work through those questions, make sure that they are answered appropriately. I will email responses to the City Commission, but I also plan on, at the work session, being able to address any questions that we receive and be able to discuss those further. Then we hold our public hearing on November 11th, and the budget has to be adopted by the last meeting of the year.
I think there was the request for hard copies that went out and everything. Do you know when we would expect those?
Some of us got them today, but there may, did you request one?
Yeah.
Okay, she may not have gotten one down here, because I requested, Mary did, Maureen did.
I'll check back in and everything else, double-check that I request, actually did request one then. Okay.
I can get you one, though.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron can hook you up.
Thanks, Aaron.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Complaints?
Good job, Coach.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. That was my first one.
Yeah, we need to digest all of this.
Absolutely.
Remember that he said if you have any questions on it, make sure that you get it to him, but to Aaron by the October 14th, so that the staff has time to review, yes.
Our raving and-
So just send us a reminder. Like a week before. I'm not serious. I am serious about that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Any other statements? All right, did a good job.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
How move that we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries, we are adjourned at 8:15.